Diana Iverson.
Here.
Howard Zimmerman.
Here.
Joan Eusman.
Here.
It's Neil.
Here. We have the agenda in front of you. Can I have a motion to act so it's approved?
Uh huh.
We have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have our meeting from December fourth of two thousand and fourteen. Is there any additions or deletions? If not, is there a motion to approve it as it is typed?
Uh huh.
We have a motion to approve it as it's typed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we want to first welcome each and every one of you here tonight. In case you can't hear, do one of these or something so, because this acoustics in this room are not always the greatest, but I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to hear. And since, so don't be afraid to ask us to speak up. With that in mind, we are going to just do the business to be reviewed in its case ZT one of fourteen to continue discussion of the request for an approval of an application for a text amendment. Check with your fellow stand, please.
Okay, it's your December fourth meeting, which you just have the minutes for. At the conclusion of the meeting, you made a decision, you wanted to continue the review of zoning case ZT one fourteen until your February meeting, which is this meeting here. This is the zoning case that is revolves around the proposed text amendment to the Lewis County zoning regulations to add Article eight wind energy section of two six dash six two six property value agreement of Lewis County zoning regulations concerning wind energy conversion systems. This is kind of a continuing issue that's going on at your Pleasant Ridge hearings. It's my impression you still have Mr. McCann is going to come possibly Tuesday. Mr. McCann is your property value expert.
Correct.
The person Mr. Weeks had taken his information, right Steve? Is that who you got your information?
That's correct, that's correct.
Mr. Steve got his information from Mr. McCann, so he's going to be testifying at the Pleasant Ridge hearing on Tuesday, February the tenth. So you'll hear more information on that particular issue on the tenth from the gentleman who got you some of the initial information regards to that. And at your Pleasant Ridge meeting last week, you kind of indicated you were going to kind of continue this until you had all the information from the Pleasant Ridge meeting too.
I'm supposed to go first?
They didn't discuss, they wanted to discuss it, so.
Anybody?
Are we going to continue on testimony here or wait to see what comes out of Tuesday's hearing and then move on this in March, forward in March?
What's your pleasure?
I think that's kind of, that's kind of what we put out there as, I think it's a good idea to get all the information before we try to make a decision.
Are we going to have some more information given to us tonight?
I'm trying to think where we were at when we continued this back in December. We had some testimony?
I think we completed almost all the testimony, people present at that particular time. And then you knew at that point in time we're going to still have more people come before you at the Pleasant Ridge hearing, which you had some come before you, but not everybody, so.
Well, and where's the committee that's looking at the whole ordinance, where are they? Do you have any idea where they're at with all this?
I do. They've actually bypassed, they know this past Tuesday, they did bypass the property value issue based for the same reasons. They know that there's more information coming up in this coming week. They have focused on well, they went through the definitions, adding a definition for accessory primary use. And then they went through some other issues in regards to some proposed signage and issues like that. Meeting on Tuesday took a lot of time, I guess you have it behind you. They started discussing setback issues, proposed setback issues. So at that point in time, outside of agreeing that setbacks will be measured from one point being the sun or the turbine, although having a lot of concepts and different thoughts put out there, there's nothing colluded in regards to setbacks in regards to those, so. They're kind of thinking that is one of the major issues that seems to be under discussion is the setback issues along with the property value issues, so they did have some discussion in regards to setbacks. So they did do that, and they're they're in part trying to see what comes out of the Pleasant Ridge hearings also as a whole, so they kind of look at that too, so. But they're only meeting once a month at this point in time, and there have been meeting dates. I have no idea if they're going to increase those meeting dates once Pleasant Ridge gets fired. Try to condense their review of that, that's a possibility, but I have no idea since it is relatively new committee. Actually, it's still changing committee, they just put a new member on this past Tuesday, so.
And this committee is made up of?
It is the Ag and zoning committee of the Lewis County Board. And they added four extra members to it. Becca, John, Jeff Rickenmeyer, and Mark Priggen, who's also on the county board, but he wasn't on that committee at that particular time. He's placed on the committee for two months, he's been off the committee now, he's been replaced on the committee, so he's still kind of in the head hot committee. The reason he's removed from committee is there was nobody from District one county board on the committee, and they put someone from District one on the committee.
Are you going to accept public comment before?
I'm sorry.
Are you going to accept public comment before you decide?
Yeah, I think we will.
It just, when you're discussing the March meeting, just to kind of let you know, maybe we may have to move the meeting up a little bit. Is it, I've kind of consolidated your review cases for a couple of months. And I have like six of them lined up to do in March. I know they don't take very long, but they're there, so. If you want to do that, you may want to move this meeting up to six thirty. So you have some time to move through them, and then you can get into the regular meeting too, just as an idea.
So between now and then, Ag and zoning is going to be one time right before our zoning?
Correct, I'm thinking the Tuesday before you meet.
And we'll have the hearings wherever we're out for wind farm?
Wherever.
Hearings.
Is there a timeframe on coming up with a conclusion? On the text, on this text?
No, there's not. Because you've been making a recommendation to the county board, and then they can act on it.
We're going to make a recommendation, Ag and zoning is going to be looking at the same things and coming up with their own language.
Well, hopefully when we get down to the property value, should we go through funnel things together and see, kind of see where we're at with that. But that is a possibility, I'm not going to disagree with that, that's not a possibility.
I'm just looking at timeframes and the meetings for a lot of hours over the last couple of months.
I know.
If we're doing double the work, I don't want, I don't want to see that time spent that way. So if we push this off and then we till March, or I guess March, we don't know, try to go further than that, we have public comment at that time, we have gathered more from the wind farm hearings, are we going to look at it outside of our meetings here to come up with language that we would recommend?
That's, that's up to you individually, I mean, we need, I mean, the line we should have to propose inside the meeting, so it has to be in context of the meeting, so.
Isn't, didn't we decide last meeting though to kind of let the committee come up with some?
We discussed that there is an option for you to work with if you want to come up with some new language, I think that is an option.
And then we can, we can use that language to make our decision.
It sounds like they're throwing a bag at us.
They're going to throw it back at us?
No, they, they already have.
They're not necessarily doing anything else?
They.
Not necessarily, they just haven't got to that.
Right, they're, they're focused on setbacks.
So I mean, you could, you could actually, you could actually continue it or table it until, you have to see what they do with it too. I mean, you always have the option to bring it back.
But we did ask them to look at property value.
Why don't we try to table it and have a joint, do we have a joint meeting?
That's a good.
I mean, with, with this committee to hash this out, so that we're not always in our time.
We can always look into it.
I, I don't know whether that's, I mean, does that make sense?
It does, it seems fruitless to have them meet and then not decide anything and then throw it back at us and then we're behind. And then we don't decide anything.
And I mean, realistically, oh, we we as a group are the people that have heard the most testimony regarding this. But we have, we've, we've sat there, we've listened to not just this farm, wind farm proposal, I mean, three previous, we've listened to.
We could do, we could check into it.
Because that, that committee is basically made up of county board members.
Correct.
We have several people in the audience that would like to ask a question. Is it anything that this board wants to talk about further? Or can we ask the people in the audience a question? Is everybody all right with that? First, we have this lady over here who yeah, you're going to have to speak up.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have kind of a soft voice. My name's Carolyn Gerwin, and I'm on the county board, but I'm not on the Ag and zoning committee. So there are pros and cons to putting it off. It's been put off a lot, it's been on your docket since August. One of the pros of dealing with it is somebody has to go first and somebody has to show some, you know, lead, take the lead. And as Mike was saying, you guys know more than anybody else. So I would point that out. We've also had multiple samples of language, they're all reasonable samples of language. I submitted something, I submitted something, there's some, some other ones, and we have the original one from Steve. I mean, if your determination is that anything is better than nothing, this is a way to get an up or down vote on this particular issue, rather than the context of an entire specific wind farm proposal. So if you want to make a decision based on a principle set of facts and, you know, based on principles, then there's nothing really holding you back at this point to make a recommendation and to have the county board make a, you know, a determination, up or down vote on that particular facet. So, thank you. And I just want to say I appreciate so much all the time you all have put in, it's you, you probably should run seminars or something at this point. I don't know if you remember at the Dear Run hearing, the counsel for, for Eva Drola said that there had been more testimony and evidence submitted on property values in that proceeding than in any proceeding in Illinois at that time, maybe the United States.
Thank you. We had somebody else ready to add.
She, she actually basically said a lot of what I was going to, to say. We are in, we actually started the review of the wind ordinance, this was the third meeting. The moratorium came in in January. And unless things change, if the meetings go like they have been, it's going to be a very slow process. I'm not even sure that it'll get, we'll get through it in the six months for the moratorium. So that's just what I kind of wanted to add, that, you know, it's going to be a, it'll probably be slower going through our, our, the process that I'm helping them with. Just kind of add, there's a lot of differing opinions. So it's going to, I think it's going to take us a while.
But do you agree or disagree with Mr. McCann's testimony before them, will be of any value or not?
I do agree, I do agree with that as well. But I haven't read everything of Steve's either, I've only read partial parts of what Steve had, so. I have read the Dear Run testimony though.
Any questions from the board in regards to any of these responses?
I have a question, um, you want to answer it or you do? That when Ag and zoning meets then, do you update the full county board after you meet at other county, at other meetings?
No.
No. So what, you're part of the Ag and zoning committee?
I'm just, I have a seat at the table.
She's an ad hoc member.
Yeah, so
Not ad hoc.
If you think it's going to take months to hash out all the?
The major points and the setbacks, the property values, the noise, the flicker, those four things. The county asked for citizens to turn in recommendations back in October, I think it was October. And so there was a lot of stuff that was sent in by just residents, citizens of the county with backup information and things. And so from what I've seen, you know, going through that envelope, is those are the four big subjects. Is the setbacks, the property value guarantee, the noise, and the flicker. So those are going to be probably the ones that are going to take us the longest to go through.
So they may have more information than we do, if they've gotten comment from, you know, if it's been opened up at the county board level to all residents of the county, they may have more ideas on property value guarantees than have flowed into this board through our meeting process.
They don't have like a lot of the, they're not using like testimony from like Dear Run or, you know, the things that have talked about before, they, I don't, we don't have this either.
This meeting, what's?
Meeting, the text amendment, language that you guys received.
They have touched property value, so. Initially, a legal fashion thing, because flicker, the noise, and setbacks are all, you know, related to each other to a degree. So you have to realize that's not say it's going to be easy to make an agreement.
So why did they choose to tackle those three instead of what we asked them to do?
Well, they're going through, can I answer?
They're doing all this on the regular, doing all this on the regulations.
From the beginning to the end, they're not doing it like, you know, like topic, they're really just kind of going right through.
Start on page one, they're going through skipping property value issue.
Skip it.
They did that, yeah.
Yeah, skip it.
Because there's.
More testimony, more testimony, that would go worse.
Could I be here, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Could I be here? Steve Weeks from Ford. I think, you know, this, this matter's been, been pending since August. I filed this original application August the twelfth. And I think just to echo, you know, Carolyn's comments and Becca's, I mean, we could be bogged down with the Ag and zoning committee for a long, long time here. And I think we're down to the point, we have this, this proposal, Carolyn has a very, what I think is a very simplified, very easy, workable property value guarantee agreement. I think we need to get this to the county board and let them decide yes or no, up or down. Are we going to have this or not? You know, all this type of stuff with the board, this, this is just a stall and delay. Not just bog this thing down, we could be here a year from now talking about it. So I think, you know, we have enough information on the table, as Carolyn said, you know, not only the people who have, who have listened to the testimony, but but the zoning board, you know, you're probably, you're experts at this point. We've got lots of pros and cons here, and I think we need to get this to the board, and let's, let's hear what they have to say. Are they going to support a property value agreement? Yes or no? That way we'll know where we're going with this. I guess I look at this kind of as, as like crop insurance for farmers. You know, it's an insurance safety net. Here we're dealing with property values throughout the county, and we need, we need some kind of a safety net here. And this is exactly what's being proposed, what's on the, what's been filed, what Carolyn has proposed. And let's, let's see where we're going with this. That's my recommendation. Let's just, let's just cut to the chase. Stop the stalling and delaying, not that, not that this group is, that's not my point. But the Ag and zoning, they'll be bogged down here for years if they're skipping, skipping this agreement, then let's just move ahead.
Well, the purpose of this committee is an advisory to the county board.
Exactly.
So if we, for example, said this is what we want, and we send it to the county board, they have final say so as to up, down, or throw it out.
And that, that's what I'm saying, let's get it to the board, let, let them tell the citizens of Louisiana County, are you going to have a property value agreement? Yes or no? I mean, we can be pivoting over commas and periods and paragraphs.
And the setback rules and all of the other different things that you're talking about. They have been discussed each and every time we've had an application from a wind farm company to come into here. We've gone through this before. We've gone through this once before and we gave this to the board and something similar to this, and they threw it out. I, I, you know, I know we've listened many different times, but we have to just bite the bullet, make a decision, whether it's in favor or not in favor, and send it to the board and let them make final decision instead of having more and more time spent on this.
Well, I agree, but if we send them something that isn't very good, it's just going to get tossed aside again.
I understand that.
So if we don't do a good job at this point, we're, we're wasting time and we're going to end up with the same garbage we've got now, which is nothing.
Right, I understand that. But the Ag committee is supposed to be, if they're going to throw it, put it in or put it out, they will fine tune it. And they have the right to do that. We don't have the right to fine tune anything. Although we can give them something that we think is pretty fine tuned, and they might not like it.
Right, right, right. That, I guess that's where I'm stuck at is, do we I don't know if we even got your document into our record officially that we can even look at what Carolyn submitted.
Yeah.
We are all.
It was a good idea. So we didn't go through it.
I mean, well, if this, not, I don't know, if, if this committee, we did.
Okay, I remember being at the tag into the meeting and saying.
Well, we took it in the next, took it, took it in the next meeting.
Took it in the next meeting.
I'm just afraid that if it's not a good quality product that we can support, they're, they're, they're going to kick it back. I mean, we've left it so open ended that at the end of wind farm hearings, that we expect that there will be a property value guarantee. We threw that out there. We said we approve on the condition that there's a property value guarantee. Because we didn't spell it out, they just said, strike that and voted. That's, that's what's happened. So.
Is that how we put it? Was this simple, a condition of? Yeah, but this time we're giving them an example of how to arrive at a property value.
But we haven't, we haven't given them an example. I, I mean, as I, as I look through quickly, just the ones that have been submitted, Mr. Weeks said, yours doesn't address the sale of property. It addresses the house in ownership. So that's a hard one. There's, there's no loss until, there's no potential for loss until the property is transferred. And, and that's where, that's where I, I think it's extremely important. If, if someone remains in their home, they haven't lost any money or gained any money because of the wind farm. But they need to have the option that if they have to leave their home, that they're not significantly going to have lost money.
Don't forget mortgages.
Right, I mean, because someone I just talked to, a loan seller in Dwight, she said that when she bought her house, it was appraised at a hundred and thirty thousand, and since the prison closed and all the stuff that's going on over in the Dwight area, her house now appraises for ninety thousand. So I mean, it goes, they can, so therefore they can't get more than ninety thousand dollars. They can't tap into the equity they thought they had in the home, but.
But appraisal is an
It's an opinion.
An opinion of a
It's an opinion of students' homes.
Exactly. Until, until the property is transferred, until somebody is willing to pay ninety thousand, that house may appraise at ninety thousand and they can't sell it. They may have to sell it for seventy five thousand. So the appraisal for ninety was worthless.
Right, well, I mean, I don't disagree, but if someone, you know, if I have a house and I've got ninety thousand borrowed on it and I thought it was worth a hundred and fifty, I'm thinking I have sixty thousand equity I can put my child through college with, I can't get it because you can't loan over a hundred percent value.
That's just the, the point. Just because you want to stay in your house and not sell it, that's fine. I mean, if you, it's going to be increased or decreased. But the point is, when you do go to sell, if and when, if there's, if there's a loss, that's, that's what this, that's the mechanism that's been placed to determine that.
And I agree with that, when the, when the property is transferred.
Exactly.
When the, not, not just to arbitrarily say, we've lost value because the wind farms are present. That, it, it needs to be put in motion as soon as, as soon as there's a ready, willing, and able buyer.
I think that's the, that's the intent here. It's not to say everybody who lives out in, in a rural area, you know, gets compensated, you know, before they go to sell it, it's when they go to sell it.
Okay.
That's, that's the point. That's the whole, that's the whole crux of these issues.
Well, but there, there's a lot of dealings in there with simply appraisals and not with the potential purchaser.
But you could define transfer to include mortgages or refinancing, for example, or financing, maybe that would.
You know what? These are things that we need to know.
Right, and, and, and isn't, isn't it my understanding that even if we submit something, it's not going to help the people who are going to be affected by this wind farm?
You have to deal with that separately at this point in time.
Well, that would have to be a, a condition. It wouldn't be the testimony that's going to help them.
Know that the intention has been for certainly the past two, that this be put in for the, for the past two wind farms.
Why can't you use language such as Mr. Weeks's or Carolyn's or whatever suits your fancy as part of the condition for the application?
Because you probably need to, you almost need to go through them line by line and discuss pros and cons of each one of them.
Which is what we're being asked to tackle. We, we need to stay on the fact that we're talking about a text amendment, we're not talking this right here, we're not talking about the condition to be added to the, it's a text motion for the approval of now the wind farm hearing.
But that's, that's the basics, basics of the reason you want the text amendment is to be.
So that we don't have to do it again, we do it once.
So we don't have to add the condition anymore as part of the process.
Right, 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 right. And, and the other thing is, is we, we have to remain bipartisan. But you know, I mean, there's certain, certain interests have a heavier weight on, you know, we have to look at it it's good for
The whole.
The whole, not just weighted towards the homeowner or the wind farm company. So we kind of have to be fair in that respect.
So you have seen any? We have, we have, you have a question down here at the, the end of the table, will you?
What I was going to say was, if one of your concerns is the fact that on the wind farm approval, you sometimes put a conditional approval based on property value, and then they throw that part out. If you actually had the text amendment done and in the ordinance, then it would be easier to say, we want it conditionally approved based on the corrected ordinance with this property value in it. So if you, if you guys can go through and agree, this is a good way, we're all happy with this, get it to the county board and get it in before the wind farmers voted on, that's, there's that much more chance they'll take it for the wind farm.
We're not going to amend the ordinance before the moratorium is over. And it's not going to count for an answer, so.
No, you can't.
Yeah, you can.
The moratorium is on acceptance of applications, so you can, the idea is that you will change the ordinance before the moratorium ends.
Or, or we're going to finish up the ordinance revisal by the time the moratorium ends, but it would be pretty much coinciding with the end of the moratorium out of that.
Doesn't have to.
It doesn't have to, but considering how it's all going, what's the life, I'm trying to be realistic, what is it really going to happen?
But see, this doesn't.
We tried for twelve months.
We were in for support of that.
Don't blame me.
I would think that if you had actual language chosen and put on the books in some form or fashion, or at least proposed to the county board, it would be much more likely for them to be able to accept it if they have time to get to understand it. As I said, you guys are the, you, you know the need for it more than anybody else does. The setbacks are really very critical because they are the best protection for, for homeowners. If you get the setbacks right, everything else takes care of itself and there should never need to be a property value guarantee plan. But the problem is, we don't exactly know what the setbacks, no matter what you pick now, you can't know for certain in the future that the setbacks are actually going to be protective. So the, I see the property value guarantee plan as the safety net, so that in case there are impacts that scare off other buyers, that the homeowner that has already been there and never expected this to happen can still get their life savings back from their investment. And then the community moves on with a different set of property values than they had before, but at least that individual homeowner is not scummed. Not taken on a wares by it. But I think that if you, if you do this now, you're going to have to do it sooner or later. You're either going to be doing it in this context, you're going to be doing it in the context of wording a condition if you end up saying you want a condition. So you had, two times you've said conditions, you've wanted a condition but haven't had cooperation with getting language done for you. It truly should have been your attorney's.
When's the moratorium over, when?
July, in my opinion.
No, the moratorium is over in July. If we present this to the board before July, then you're saying it's more chances of. If we present this to the board before July, then you're saying it's more chances of throwing it out?
Yeah.
Number one, you have to present it to them, you know, later than May, before they go to the process.
Can I comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to just say, you know, you guys are talking about how in the last couple of applications, you've attached this and it's been thrown out. This is an opportunity to test the wording with the county board before you get to the next application. This, even though this doesn't apply to the applications on the table, if you put this out there and let the county board say yes or no, it gives you an opportunity to know how to word it before when the application comes if you wanna attach it again. Because you've had that issue, it sounds like, previously.
But if the county board throws it out, we, and then it's done deal, we don't, can't bring it back in.
Another application could always be filed for another amendment. Or the Ag and zoning can do it in their process. Right now, they're just sort of deferring to you guys.
Are some of you confused?
No, we're not confused. Number one, you wanted to applaud, you said earlier you wanted to applaud the issue. You, you did say at one of the Pleasant Ridge hearings that you wanted to listen to the rest of the testimony of that hearing, so.
That is correct.
At this point in time, it's probably wise that you continue at the March and just, you know, and if you wanna have specific language to discuss at the March, that's fine. I mean, we're meeting up a half an hour to accommodate our regular business. Right from there.
I saw.
Are we not at all interested in a joint meeting to try to hash out?
I would, I would say it'd be nice to have them there if they're, if they're at the March meeting.
Just, just to do this once and, and be done?
Okay.
But that, keep in mind that's not the county board.
We realize that, but we all, we're gonna get some, some input.
There's a motion on the floor.
Right. What's the motion, Howard?
That we postpone it to the March meeting.
That you, you wanna invite those.
Do we have a joint meeting?
Are we inviting?
You'll invite them.
We invite them. Do we have a second to, Howard? Do we have a second to Howard's motion?
Well, are we gonna then have public comment at that, that meet? So after March, we, we, right?
You're, you're conducting a public hearing on this. I don't see how you can mix and match committees here.
Okay. Back again.
I think we just wanna have their input.
We had, Howard had a motion. If we're not gonna have a second, then we'll move on.
Talk about public comment, and we don't just find what you mean by public comment or?
Well, are we finishing up what we already started in December and gathering on the documents, we close the public comment and then we start working on writing the text amendment.
So, is that what you wanna do?
That's what I'm asking. If that's what the motion is, is that what we're starting next coming?
That's not what his motion was. At least that's not the way I understood it.
Just continuing the general. So you're not gonna be ready to do it next time either?
Mark.
Well, your first, first motion, then we, it seems like it's died because we have a lack of a second.
Well, wait a minute. For, I mean, for the next meeting, they're gonna have, Mr. McCann will be testifying, so they should basically have all the information back with that.
That's a Pleasant Ridge case.
That's Pleasant Ridge. They have all, they have all the documents performed, so I think it's kinda short-sighted to say that we'd be ready to do it for the next meeting.
Well, I thought that's what was just clarified is that it, I, I, okay, I don't, I don't know what's happening. I don't understand the motion either then, so.
It died.
Okay, so I thought there was gonna be a motion to.
The motion died.
To receive the rest of the evidence.
The motion died.
Okay.
We have a question. Go ahead. Speak up so we, old folks can hear you on this end.
Gotcha. I think you guys have heard all the testimony. You're the experts. You have Steve Weeks's proposed language in front of you.
Can I stop you right there? Thank you for calling us an expert, but I have to disagree on that point for you. Now proceed.
You have Steve Weeks here. You have his amendment. Why not take half an hour, go through it?
Because.
Ask him questions.
At the Pleasant Ridge meeting, they said that they were not going to deal with it tonight. They're gonna move it on. They were gonna listen to all the testimonies being presented at that so they could take it all under consideration. In order to be fair for everybody, since they say that as a public statement, that's probably what they should do.
And, and truthfully, every bit of testimony that's been presented has been, there's no devaluation of property. So you want us to act on that? Be careful.
Well, we might get act on your full mouth.
I asked the guy if there was devaluation of property. I said, I have my house right in front of these turbines. Will it lie to you, go up or down? And he said, some will go down, some will go up.
So that's moot.
Not for mine, I think.
So McCann, I, I'm, I'm speculating based on previous testimony, will testify that he's gonna show us thing. I, I, I don't know what he's gonna, he's, he's previously testified. We've heard adverse effects of property value. So as a board, just like I said there, we need all the information. If we act now, we're unfounded. We can't solidify why we acted in such a way. So let us gather the information, come back. I think it would be very fruitful to have a joint meeting, if that's within the legality, to sit down with this, this subcommittee that's been, that's been created and we have been totally not, we have no say in. I, I, good luck going through all the testimony. There's hours of testimony. At least we can get our part in, the part that we feel is the most important, and it's always been property value. That's my three cents. Got more than two, yeah, three.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
How are we bringing in McCann's information that he presents at a different hearing into this regularly scheduled Ag and zoning board meetings? It can, it can just move from hearing to hearing.
It's in public record.
So bring it in. So he doesn't have to come here.
It'd be an exhibit.
You could incorporate it first.
Yeah, you can incorporate it as an exhibit in our fashion.
So then, after we hear that, at our March meeting, then.
We need to draw a conclusion.
Would you draw, be able to draw a conclusion whenever we like?
Well, there'll be more testimony between now and then, if.
I, I hope. I believe that.
I hope, you get through a few more than that, Mr. Chairman.
But for purposes of the property value guarantee, him and then questions of him and.
But there may be other real estate individuals that, that provide some testimony.
I'm gonna testify on property values as well.
You will testify. You, you plan to.
Can you do it now? I plan to. I have, I have actually testified to this board for this exact thing we're talking about, yeah.
Congratulations, man.
So.
So then at that March meeting, or March meeting, my question is then at that point, are we gonna have an up or down vote whether we're gonna recommend a text amendment?
We gotta write one.
We, we, we need to come in with language at night and give guidance to the legal counsel as to what language you wanna put in and I wanna move forward with it.
So if we, if, if, if that's our, gonna be our motion, if we wanna take that up at our March meeting, we need to have.
Ideas. Ideas, yeah. And, and there's, I know there's three on five. Is that right? Three, four? So, oh, okay. I mean, I mean, there's options. There, there might be good parts of Mr. Weeks's. Mr. Irwin's might have good parts and we kinda have to match them together to make them work.
So is that gonna be matched together after we have the testimony in the next two or three weeks and we'll have enough information to have that done for the March meeting? That's what I'm asking.
Guess it depends on what we all individually think. Are you ready to write one? You know, when will you be going?
I don't have, there's no way.
So that's what we need to be ready to do.
We need, we need ideas and basically have a working meeting to move forward with it.
Yeah.
Right. And.
So you're saying we could, we could have a working meeting ahead of that meeting?
Rich.
I know.
We, we like you, man. We spend enough time together.
So it's gonna go longer than March.
We have a freaking all-star speaker.
There's a possibility that in, in March at the meeting, we can, we can sit down with the previously proposed. We can basically have a public reading of them. And, and collectively, we'll just have to.
And start the process.
We'll strike this, strike that, and spend two hours at the meeting hashing through it. There might be some simple things that we just say, yep, that makes sense. Uh, you know, this is important to me. If, if the real estate transfers to a fellow, to another family member, should the property value guarantee kick in? I don't think so. Cause I can sell, if, if you sold your house to your son, you can sell it to him for a dollar. Shouldn't kick in. There should be, that's important to me, that that, that be not a law. So, you know, things like that. I'd say in two hours. And the other thing, if we could, together, we could have buy-in. The Ag zoning committee could buy into why we did it, our theory, and they could say, they'd understand everything behind it.
Why we're doing everything.
Why we're doing it.
And the reasoning behind it.
Instead of just giving them a piece of paper that says.
What it is.
This is what we think. No, they, they'll understand why we thought that.
And hopefully, we, we think that then they'll take it back. When it goes to the, to the full board, then it should pass because somebody else can explain it and won't be there.
And hopefully, they should support it. That committee should support it.
That's been my thought alone.
Doesn't mean it'll pass. Doesn't mean it'll pass, but at least we've done our due diligence and sent a good product out. And, and Joan's right. It's gotta be quality. We've gotta get it right.
Before you come in.
What's that? That's where she comes in.
March will be here before we know it.
It's called getting older.
Yeah.
Okay. Now we can ask for, uh, a motion to have a joint meeting with this other group.
So I'll move. In light of not all the testimony being presented at this point.
Let's discuss it. Make the motion.
I'm, I'm making it. That was in my motion. Well. In light of all the testimony not being presented at this point, I motion to table this until the March meeting. And I would like to invite the members of the.
County board. Ag zoning.
Uh, ordinance review committee.
Ag zoning, emergency services committee.
Yeah. Okay, that's the one we want. Uh, to our next meeting to additionally discuss this and have a conclusion.
Now we need a second.
Now a second.
Read it back, what you're.
Okay. At least then, your last statement was that you, then we would have, draw a conclusion.
Yeah. I, I agree. We don't need to keep, we don't need to keep, it's just we need to.
I like some of these people here, but I don't like you well enough to see you on a monthly basis.
Wait, we see them every week.
I'm very one and I don't.
We see them every week.
Twice a week.
But I know we need to get this thing off of the table and gone. I have a motion. It's been seconded. Call, roll call, please.
Yes.
John Fitz.
Yes.
Richard Kiefer.
Yes.
Ann Iverson.
Law offense always, Howard.
Howard Zimmerman.
No.
Judge Jusman.
Yes.
Gibbs Nielsen.
Yes. Okay, the motion passed. So at least we're guided down to the records we have to conclude.
What do you want?
Okay. I thank each and every one of you tonight for wasting your time and coming, but you did help us out. And you don't think it's a wasted time, otherwise we would've quit a long time ago.
Please don't do that.
We're diligent, we're trustworthy, we like our job because we keep coming back year after year after year. I've been doing this now for almost thirty years. So I must like it, but I think we have to have a good product. And I'd like to see us have some, uh, little diligence here to kept it down. So I thank you all for coming and we'll have to move on.
Since I have them captive, I'm gonna try to take a minute to try to figure out a February schedule for the month. It's an administrative issue. We're not discussing anything in regards to hearing outside of the schedule.